We've just approved the parking for trailers and our next item is landfill compactor. Possible purchase here.
Yeah, so just wanted to discuss the approval of this compactor contingent upon inspection and some other issues. I actually was on the phone with him on the way in here discussing one of the things that he sent me in the warranty section there with six months parts replacement for the transmission and told him that we need to have a year on transmission. He's, so this machine in general was a reconditioned machine that went through his plant, his facility in 2015 and was completely stripped down and built new. Reconditioned engines, transmission, everything new. Went to a facility in Arkansas which is where we will have to either Ryan and I or Ryan or I will fill, inspect this unit. And their facility in Arkansas just across the border is very similarly sized tonnage wise to ours, so this machine has not had a lot of hours on it. But they, for whatever reason, have been in flux and they're going to trade it in on a newer one. So this machine is a kind of an optimum deal here for us because it's an aged machine, but reconditioned within the last thirty-five hundred hours should prove to have lots of longevity for the hours that we anticipate putting on here.
So Kevin, when we talked the other day, I didn't catch the part about if I just heard you right, it's somewhere being reconditioned or has been, but then it's going back to Arkansas?
Oh, it's in Arkansas, just across the border from where this plant is.
From where this plant is, okay.
And it's going back to this facility as a trade. And he is going to go through the machine in its entirety, again, all new fluids, everything, and show us all of the oil samples.
Okay.
And they're going to pull the transmission and ensure that all of those pressures bench tests, so everything is right when it leaves. Because they're selling it as a reconditioned machine. The one thing that on this paper that says six months that I corrected this morning with him is that he is going to do a year warranty because I explained to him that we likely will not exceed a thousand hours a year on this compactor.
Mm-hmm.
Along, along with our own internal, similar to the road department, maintenance schedules. This machine also is going to come with completely new re-cleated machines. So a landfill compactor that is fairly new, that has old cleats or forty, fifty percent or less cleats, has no density and, and the wheels for these machines are about forty gram through reconditioning. So this machine with new cleats will last us for a very long time.
Yeah, I'm good.
I just, I just want to be, I just want to talk to you about it upfront, I want to be able to go look at this thing, but we've found a lot of machines on the internet, we've called about them, we've taken oil samples on some, including the, the current machine that's at our landfill now, which we are talking to the operator about as a backup machine. That, that's a later discussion for later time, but this will be a primary machine. The problem that we found in dealing with some of these other people is it's a, it's a company that just simply moves machines in and out, they're just sales, they don't, they don't service, they don't recondition, they don't do anything. This outfit reconditions and so they have some skin in the game, so to speak, with this machine. It's what they do, that's primarily what they do.
Did you have him put the one line in there, the AC will be checked out and we'll do a cold?
Yeah, well, I did, actually.
Okay.
That is one thing that, that is one thing that if you've ever been on a working pace and having to work, the, the interest of having doors open while you're doing it is not something that anybody wants to be involved in.
I couldn't agree with you more, I just thought it was ironic.
All of the, all of-
The AC needs to blow cold instead of hot, so yeah, that's good.
The, the other machinery that we are demoing all has filtration, cap filtration for our safety of our operators, so clean air.
Yep.
We don't want people breathing in garbage.
Makes sense, do you?
So we'd like to go look at it, I believe it's August thirty-first, no, that doesn't sound right, July thirty-first, August first and second. That's when I'm going to, either myself or Ryan, one of us is going to look at this thing.
So what, what are you needing today relative to this conditional approval?
Conditional approval based on inspection and also when he receives this machine, he's going to provide us with all those oil samples and so forth for us to make our final determination.
Okay.
And then, and then if there's, if there's no deficiencies, I'd like to move forward.
I'll, I'll make that motion, okay?
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to purchase this machine contingent upon inspection process that will end the warranty. Further discussion. Kevin, I know that it has to be shipped in, that is an oversized load, so there's no way to send our low boy in.
There's no way that we can, we don't have the capability of doing that, but this, this guy works with several different contractors that we'll get estimates on and, you know, I didn't, I didn't get that cart before the horse because I didn't want to-
I'm just hopeful that it could be maybe our low boy that is going to work.
No, there's no way. It's, it takes overweight, this thing weighs seventy-five thousand pounds.
Overweight, oversized.
Everything.
Can you bring it on a real line?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. We'll ship it out there, yeah.
No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Kevin, I, I would like to, and maybe even us agree or make a motion, you mentioned a little bit about the, the other compactor that's local. Would you have some discussion and maybe we can give you guys a minute to go ahead and pull the plug on that.
Yep. So the, the other machine that we've been talking about is on site, it currently is working with our current contractor. It is the same model machine, it has a little bit more age and some more wear and tear on it. It is likely that it will be, well, not likely, it will be a lot less expensive because it has, it can't go anywhere, there's no, you know, we can, we can have a machine here with no emission controls on, but California cannot, so the wheels on it are functional, they're not, they're probably sixty percent, so in reality, it will serve as a good backup machine. We've gone through the process of testing the oil samples on it and it's tested okay. I'm going to, and I'm in negotiations with Mitch now to have him buy the material, the oil and the filters to let my mechanic, our mechanic go service it and then we'll run it for fifty more hours and we'll test the oil again just to ensure, but that, that dollar amount is somewhere between, in still in negotiations, between thirty-two thousand on the low end to thirty-six thousand on the high, so it will serve though as a-
Can we go back to the wheels, because I thought you said earlier that the one out there doesn't do the compacting, right? Because there was only forty percent.
No, no.
Maybe I misnumbered.
These are about fifty to sixty percent.
Okay.
This machine in Missouri, it will come with brand-new cleats.
Right, I understand.
And those, they wear over the course of time naturally, the further away from solid waste you get them and on abrasive material they wear off. But this other machine that, that Adair has now will serve as a backup machine. In, in every landfill that I've visited, when I went to Molo in Colorado, we visited landfills, all these other ones, Clamath, The Chutes, Mill Review, I'm going Friday to work with the operational manager in Krip County, because their landfill's very similar, but all these guys tell me that we do not want to get in business and not have a backup machine on.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what my idea is.
No, that, and that, that part's made sense, I just wanted to clarify that this one still, not just motor-wise, but it will function without getting new cleats.
Yep, it will function, but that's not something, that's not something we will have to invest in. It, it will, it will suit its needs as a, as a backup machine.
Okay.
I guess, yes, for, I've known Kevin, I've had some discussion on that, I'm very supportive of the backup machine, especially at the kind of dollars we're talking about. I didn't know if we wanted to go ahead and give him the authority, I just give it if he all comes out or if you wanted to wait until-
No, I think we need to, there's, we'd just be sitting here talking about the same thing, we, we trust you will make the best deal and decision.
Yeah, I mean-
So I, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the backup machine that Kevin's negotiating on contingent upon oil tests and everything that he believes needs to happen as well as price is satisfactory in his negotiating.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded for Kevin to have the ability to purchase contingent upon price in condition of a backup compactor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. See, we are the nice people.
I got some updates I have to go through quick if I can. So for the landfill specifically, we have hired Justin Hefflin to be the supervisor. He will start in August, date to be determined because I'm still working through the interviews of the operators and I want those two people to start together. Also, Mr. Anderson is working, Darryl Anderson is working with us to increase the efficiencies of our stormwater management for this new site so that DEQ's expectations are fulfilled, I guess is the nicest way to put that right now at this point. And so I need an operator to start with him, that'll be somewhere in the first couple weeks of August. For the road department, we are two days into ten thousand ton job laying asphalt and we should be done next Tuesday with the wearing course on that road. It's turning out very well and then we'll be done. We have enjoyed working on Dog Lake Road because of the lack of traffic, but once you're entered in something that will, it is nice to see it finished so you can move on to the next. I guess we'll leave it at that.
We're all looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After we pay, we do have some other functions, we have to lines on it, there's some site upgrades and different things. Through the process of doing this grant, we, with the project manager, we lowered the speed limit to just have two percent cross slope on this. It took a lot of expense off the job that was previously designed for guard rail, close to three-quarters of a million dollars and that's how-
Guard rails.
Well, that's what they called it there, guide rail is what it is.
Okay, guide rails, that's what I know it as.
So with changing the cross slope and eliminating the super elevations on this road, we got rid of that item in that proposal and utilized that for the extra asphalt to get dusting in the hill road, so good for the county.
Absolutely, very good work.
So it's all the way up to the end, you know?
That's where we started yesterday, started up the hill, turn around and come back, so.
Good.
Yep, by next Tuesday at the end of the day, all the asphalt should be down, then we'll put shoulders on it and we'll do some line painting and some signs and send them to the bill.
Very good.
Yeah. Wow. Perfect.
Thank you to you and your group.
Yep, we're doing a good job. Lastly, Aug- August sixth in Paisley, we're going to start oil chipping and those notices are going out to all the landowners that live along those routes, so Paisley and District Two out here above one forty. So those routes will be starting August sixth through by the end of the month, so we get all that oil shot.
Are you doing anything in or out in the community?
Yep, you'll get the notice.
Like, like Mill Street?
No, I don't care which one. No, we're doing blue, we're doing blue and green because it's been, I think it's been longer than, I have to look at, I don't have it in front of me, it's been longer than ten years since those two have been done. Mill Street we're going to do because we are there and it's not, and it's not an acceptable large amount of oil to do ZX Road, Red House Road-
Red House Road, yeah.
And Clover Flat, those are roads that we're going to base on, the asphalt that we're covering, which is-
Like several miles.
... all but.
Yeah. Well, I know they were going to do some projects there and I have not heard a word about, you know, if there's another contractor that's going to do it.
The only projects that I heard was on, it's on some of their other side streets, but not anything, that's only by what I, what I know.
Yeah.
Not anything that went across or through our, our, our routes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, sir. Have a good rest of the day.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Ann Crumroney. Never popular in a lot of discussions.
To follow up real quickly, maybe at the next meeting we'll have proposed loan terms for the loan reserve loan to the landfill to afford the equipment purchases. I know we approved it in the budget process, but we need to formalize the, the terms of interest rate and things like that, so I'll bring that forward next week.
Yeah, we're spending money, we probably ought to get that in for you.
So before you, there are two documents from our auditors, they are standard. One is the engagement letter that outlines their process and what we provide as an entity and management. The second is the contract. I do believe it states the price, it's a small, kind of a CPI increase year over year, but it's within the budgeted amount of, you know. Yeah, again, you know, with auditors, take that home and read it and fall asleep, so it's-
Well, we don't have the fall asleep person here, so.
Oh, okay. Because they still-
Shots fired.
... need a reason.
Shots fired, two grand.
Oh, okay, well, it's the way it is.
Okay, so we have two things to do here, just to approve the contract with Oster for this next year.
Well, and it's, it's for the audit that are performing right now.
Yeah.
It's for the year ending June ninth, twenty eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agreement with Oster as presented. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And, and just real fast, just, just we, over the years, we have went out and done an RFP and we've stayed with Oster because of the wanted life, we give opportunity to many others just for the record, so that people know we don't just automatically do things. Every so often we do an RFP process and the last time, I was the only one that responded if I remember any.
Well, we did get a few others, but the price differential was-
Substantial.
Substantial, and the reason Oster works so well for us is they do other entities in this location. So other auditors that bid here charge us a full war for travel and you look at our auditors, they're here almost two weeks a year, that adds up when you look at their team costs. So because they do other entities, like I said, their prices are reasonable. I have to state that when they were here, is it last week? They are only auditing in Lakeview now and in Burns. They have decided that their travel cost going to Ontario and other places is not what they want to do anymore. So I think the municipal audit world is getting even smaller. The, the people that are willing to come onsite and do these, there's just, there's less and less of them. So the next time we go out for an RFP, it'll be interesting to see who, who did.
Did I call for the questions? Can we vote on them?
We have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for, and so we have the engagement order.
Yeah, and again, that just outlines their process, what we're asked to provide and, and what, what they look at. Just a general overview of it.
Yep.
And there's nothing we need to do on that, is there?
I think there was a signature, but I can't.
I don't see it, I see on the contract, though.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You have it?
Yep.
Okay. When you do that, my motion also?
Just to be clear, you know, for the audience at home.
Did you want to turn around and talk to them?
Um, in that, in that discussion there, they will state, they don't look at every single transaction we do.
Right.
So the audit is assurance to the public that for the, the overall generalities that we are keeping our books to a high quality, but it's not looking at every single transaction that the county enters into.
Yeah, which, you know, well, it's a whole different subject than Lake County, but audits are not as, people should not feel, people should feel good about processes that they audit. People should not get lost in the notion that that does not mean everything's correct. And I'm not talking about Lake County, but we are dealing with something of different level.
Well, and, and if there's something that we would want looked at closer, we can request that.
Sure. No, and we, I don't think we, and really need to emphasize that, probably have anything of a very strong financial program in attracting the things, even with or without the audit.
But it's nice, again, to go through this process and verify our, how we do business and then improve it where we can, so I, the audits, it's a good process.
Yes, absolutely. So I'll make motion that we signed the letter as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So before Ann leaves, Commissioner, and this is kind of out of the realm of this, but just a quick update that Ann's been involved in and I've been involved, we've been involved in this Lake County, but I think it's important to say, because we were just talking about road dollars, Ann, they had a very public discussion, we have kept this kind of, as you know, under our hat relative to secure road scores, but they had a very public discussion yesterday in Nashville at the national conference on secure road schools and the methodology that's being proposed. Mark Haggerty from Head Hudders Economics laid it out to the group, Mark got a heart of me later in the day and we had quite a visit about the response. I had talked to him Friday before he went, just to give him a heads up about some, some potholes you might say that he might, might run into with commissioners, you know, relative to proposing that this longstanding sixteen, eighteen-year program that replaced revenue He might hear once again some of the terminology like welfare payments, et cetera, and we don't want to go there because then it came up by a fellow, very chilcot in Montana, relative to, well, then we won't support timber management and that's what we want to do, et cetera, et cetera. Those were the, the more minor ones. The general consensus, and I haven't followed up with Jonathan Sheffield from our NACAL staff, but it sounded like the general consensus was there was a lot of belief this was a good thing. And this program, just for the record, is something Senator White specifically has, has been promoting his staff, we've had been on a couple of conference calls with the staff, a small group of people to figure out how to roll this out relative to informing and involving commissioners here in Oregon as well as across the country, because as you know, forty states, seven hundred and eighty counties share in that program. And the beauty of this, just, I'll, maybe I'll give the short version, the proposal is to seed the pot, which will be kind of a trust fund, five point five billion dollars, and from there, monies that are collected off of revenue sharing activities for counties, because one of the other criteria we wanted to put in there is counties could, like the past SRS, they could opt out and receive, receive sharing, but that was agreed that that would be a good thing to do, so we didn't have that argument about doing this, that those who think they're going to go out and cut lots of big trees that have high value and receive lots of revenue on an annual basis and have a very stable funding program, knock yourselves out. But this was going to be a method that allowed us to ensure that the two thousand and seventeen level of SRS payments was guaranteed when this first rolled out, but they'd be increasing in value because this pot would earn a guaranteed earnings of around five percent, it's going to be independent and prosperous if it's done. And all the receipts that are generated by those who share in the guaranteed payments will go into the pot to even grow up more. The beauty of this is, is the last payment received, that pot of money is fifty-nine million dollars. When this grows to its maximum amount, then there's some other things we'll collaborate up to date with discussion, but Title II monies, if you knew them, will still exist, but there'll be a different vetting process for doing, for doing projects under Title II, that part of the, the SRS. But when it's fully vetted, inflation adjusted, which is the nineteen seventy-seven level for this program historically, it will be one point one-six billion that annually is shared instead of fifty-nine million. So that's the quick and dirty, but they talked about it openly in the, in the meetings back there, I, I did hear from Mike and Carter as well, so.
So in seventy-seven, was that the high? That is the high, okay.
Now, you know, if we look back on our records, we may find that it's not, but they said ironically that was the high for everybody. And I don't know how, I mean, I know how they did it, but-
Ours was in the eighties.
That's right.
Or, or it was in the Soldo, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll still get to that level.
It's just stable and it's certain, and there's no more argument on where that funding is.
No, no.
It takes it off of their legislative plate and it allows them to solve other issues, like force payment. So I just, I think it's outstanding, I think it sounds like the timing is right, I think people are ready to move to a different way of doing it.
Well, someone you know, Todd Devlin, he was very supportive of Mark's, you know, Todd and Carter, it seemed, and really liked all the principles around it, I'm sure that eventually this discussion, you know, people have talked about trying to do the same for pill, and while that's a great idea, you know, how a portion of DC works, if we can get five point five billion in a trust fund agreed to and the methodology for how we grow it and how we pay it, let's just take that bite of the apple right now and then let's go back and say this works really well, let's get this off our plate too on pill, let's make it mandatory, let's make it permanent, let's, let's vet the pot and then let's let it grow and let's make sure the counties are compensated fairly.
So, so the discussion is out there, how close is it to being an absolute proposal from Senator White and, and being brought in?
Well, Ann wasn't able, she, she had the prior engagements to sit in on the last meeting, but the one before, I think, is the one that that question was kind of being batted around. Ann, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I know it was in one of those two conference calls, but it was soon enough that they wanted to know, how quickly can we do this? And without going into, you know, because you never know who's going to be listening to the video literally, without going into something that might upset the apple cart on an actual scale, they have a, they have a, one of the funding bills that they're going to propose that could go in there very neatly and that's coming up.
Good, very good.
So.
Happy to see.
Good update.
Well, I apologize for bringing that up, but when we're talking about paying back to road department, if we can make this little rabbit come out of the hat, we'll make that percentage really small, because they're, they're going to be receiving good annual payments going forward.
Then just a quick update on the field grant, thank you for your work on getting letters of support, they're still rolling in. I don't know if there are any others that you're waiting on now that we've seen.
Well, we emailed-
ODOT, or did they get one in?
I have OTC combined, ODOT one. I didn't have anything from Hall Guard and the rail commissioner.
Well, that's the one that, yeah, that we needed really more than not. But we got the one from the two senators combined, but the one that I mentioned yesterday that I hadn't heard anything from was the town of Lakeview.
Would you mind putting a message to Hal and that, I would probably get time, but you will have time sooner than me, and I did not do that yesterday.
And just, and Ann put it in there, or, I don't know if you put it in there, but you showed, yeah, you did, you showed the list. ODOT County, we need to reach out, Dave, we need to reach out to Chester, Download County again. And set up just, we'll make it more unofficial, but set up the time it is with them, because they sent a letter or we asked them and they did do it, so.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Excellent. That has to be in today or is it tomorrow?
It is tomorrow, but, you know, I'll do it probably first thing tomorrow just to make sure we get it under that five o'clock Eastern time.
Well, and make sure the computer system doesn't go down.
Yeah, internet, all kinds of things, yeah, there's worries, so.
So there's updates you can do up until tomorrow, no?
In fact, I have it loaded, it's in right now.
So you might want to hit the send button and then update with any additional letters, just, well, just so that we don't have a calamity in the morning and somebody clips a line.
Yes. I did not get any response back from sending the draft out, so I sent the draft out to several people, so, so far there's been- So I sent the draft out to several people. So, so far there's been little updates to the draft.
Well, what would they update? Perfect. If you, if you read something that's perfect.
It's not.
And then, and then, and even though you put these caveats in there, I'm not a writer and all of this stuff. And they say, well, I can't improve on that.
Well, I kind of think that my mumbo jumbo on the project schedule and risk, project risks and mitigation strategies could have been even better. Thank you. All right. I'll send a note to town, thank you, and Halgard.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Hit submit where it's up right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Mr. Berman, get up here and get out of here.
As you guys know, we have an old water line out of the airport about, oh, on average, about one every four to six months we get a leak. And each time we fix that leak, it's cost us. So we decided to put a new water line in. And I did come out with three quotes. Only got one in return. As you know, those contractors are busy right now. They have, they have work, so they're not really wanting to give me quotes and they don't have time to do it. So I did get one quote from the party of construction for the amount of nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars to run a water line from the pump house to our main hangar. And like I said, it's just old and decrepit. It's a nineteen forty-three water line. And it's time for a new one or we're just going to keep it.
So I didn't know we had a problem.
Yeah.
So. Yes. I make a motion. We approve this.
I'm second motion. Motion had been made and seconded to approve nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars cost to the party of construction for replacement of water line. Any further discussion? They'll do all the good compaction we need that there's going to be asphalt that we talked about.
Yes, that's why, that's another reason we're getting ready to do that. We have, we need that water line in before we do that or we'll be carrying up our new payment. We don't want to do that.
Exactly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Mr. Cooper.
If you can follow up though, you and I.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Cooper's here with an addition. I have potential IDA.
This is moving forward. Obi Gordon, by the way.
Good morning, Gordon.
This is just, just an update. I haven't, I haven't had any talks or responses yet. I put a climate on this. It's coming. Basically, I want to get this in place here. And then when he does, just get right into it. So, just ahead of the game, dotting the i's, crossing the t's.
So are you looking for approval of this agreement contingent upon working with them and then agreeing to it? And legal counsel, they?
Yes. Yep. Yep. Everything should be in place from our end with the two, with the signatures of the commissioners. And then, yeah, we'll get it over to climate. And there, decide if they're ready. Which is sooner than, than later. And I would have feeling it's going to be within the next month or two. So there's some, well, there's, there's a price in there for, for electrical inspections and, and plan review, which is ninety dollars an hour for a portal. They need the A-level inspection. It's an eight-hour day environment. And it's electrical only. We still have in place inspections on my end where no money's exchanged. So this is strictly electrical. And because electricals have its own end.
So this agreement's good till July sixteenth, twenty twenty? Is there, I know, I see you can get out of here within thirty days. It's our obligation that if we're not able to do inspections, let's say somebody quit, retires, we don't have an A-level inspector.
We are in control of this whole IDA. So I shouldn't say, we are more in control. Any one of us would.
So we're not able to fulfill our obligation. We've just given the thirty days notice.
Correct. Okay. And you've. Basically the same as they did with the last developer.
So, and legal counsel's fully reviewed this? So we could approve this contention upon.
Since you're, the place I'm.
I'll, I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreement to write in Highland County electrical inspections and electrical plan review service contract number two thousand eighteen F zero to be contingent upon Highland County agreeing to the next signing to contract.
Second.
Motion had been seconded. Any further discussion? Good work on this, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Awesome.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So with this groundbreaking, you're ready to really start rocking and rolling?
I, I kind of was in the impression, I'm hoping at least that some Red Rock people were going to be in here. They given some updates on, I'm still kind of in the cloud of what, well, well, what is going on?
Be patient.
Well, I'm, I'm trying, but there, there, I might want to talk with the town and find out where, because now it's annexed in. Correct. So. Correct. That was my next question. We had it, you know, when, when this first go around, people came through, you know, there was a cutoff between the county's annex and the city's annex. And we gave them, you know, there, when that was going to happen. And apparently.
Well, um, well, I have a couple of meetings with some Red Rock people today.
Okay.
And we'll see what we can do.
Okay. That's just, that's just that side of it. The other side is the, is, is plans. I, I don't. Patient on my end is one thing, but as you well know, I would rather be a little bit ahead of it. But the problem is, is they're already, you know, when they came this last time, it was like, well, how long is it going to take you, you know, to have these plan review back to us? Well, give me something. Show me something.
Well, man.
We don't have anything.
And Kenny, I didn't mean to wind everything up here. Maybe after Commissioner Winters has that visit today, there would be a lot more clarity on.
Well, I'm glad you did. I just, these things are going through my head and I don't.
Well, there's a lot of moving parts to these.
A lot of moving parts. I have been in contact, the engineers, they have my cell number, like, if you talk, you know, and, and they ask their questions, you know, for me to, to get the answers to, and I get the answers to them. And, and so they're, you know, the process, like I said, the process is going.
I would say that the plans probably are not complete at this moment because there's so many moving parts.
Yeah.
And so that's probably the reason why you haven't seen it because of, there's several different parts.
Okay. Well, I just try to, I'm going to try to help as much as I can, but I can't do anything unless.
Oh, it's going to be one of those, they're going to plug, they're going to want it done right now. And you're going to have to be able to say, well, you know, this is, this is a huge project. The plan review is going to take a little longer.
Right.
What do you think?
But I don't, it'll, it'll, I just.
We'll have some discussions with them today.
Perfect. Yeah. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks, Kenny.
You bet. Thank you. Is there anybody coming for the petition for order designated newspaper? I don't think there's any reason for them. So what we have for us is every year we need to designate a newspaper for publication of our foreclosure list. And so we need to do that today.
Okay. So in the matter of designating a newspaper for the publication of the two thousand eighteen Lake County Foreclosure List, this is a petition for order designating the Lake County examiner. You see it?
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
I don't see the Lake County examiner on there, but that's who we're moving to.
No, it's just, it's just a newspaper.
Well, so, so done.
It is not on there. So do we need to have that?
I think we do.
Yeah. So your motion is to.
Designate the Lake County examiner. Designate a newspaper.
Yeah. It should probably say Lake County. So I'll, I'll second the motion. Motion had been made and seconded to petition order designated Lake County examiner as our newspaper of record. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Melanie, you might shoot that to Mr. Bailey and have him re-sign one that actually states that. All right. Melanie, using the internet service switch.
So, so we've been talking about switching to Hunter Communications because it's, I'm sorry. It's less expensive and it's a much faster speed. So ACTEC is, will migrate the county IP addresses, VPN connections, and other necessary tasks as far as the transition from Hunter Communications to provide service to the courthouse building. The Christmas Valley Annex Circuit will remain the same. Switching providers will save the county three hundred dollars per month. The initial total savings, year's total savings would be one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. This contract is for thirty-six months and would end at the time, at the end of this time, our predicted savings would be eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars in the course of thirty years. And it will double the speed that we're currently receiving from LS networks. I included in your documents, the ACTEC migration contract, the disconnect information from Hunter, or from Ellison, and the new contract with Hunter Communications.
So to enter into this contract, is the, there's the added cost of the migration for our IP people too?
Right. So.
So our, our savings is that, or our cost to migrate, how, what is the savings?
The cost after we, we pay the twenty-four hundred, twenty-four hundred dollars will be one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The first year. And thereafter, in total, will save eighty-three hundred dollars.
Thirty-six hundred a year.
Yeah, thirty-six hundred a year.
And does it say, Melanie, because we talked about this agreement, this contract's for thirty-six months, does it say in there that they, the rate will remain the same?
Yes.
Okay.
We're guaranteed five hundred dollars a month for three years.
And, and so the motion needs to, this will, when will we go in, enter, I'm looking for the.
The disconnect notice from Hunter, which our contract expires with them on August third.
With Ellis?
Or with Ellis, excuse me. Yeah.
So that's when this one will come on?
Yeah, we have the equipment here. Once we have this contract go ahead with ACTEC, they'll start converting and migrating our, our information to theirs.
I don't want to ask any more questions. It sounds painful.
Yeah, it does.
Or her. I, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract between Lake County and Hunter Communications effective at the date mentioned.
And can we add in there, Commissioner, you had to do it separate for the.
ACTEC?
Yeah, migration.
Oh, I, I didn't get inclusive with the cost of, well, no, I better, we better do that separate.
Okay.
So did you second the motion?
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded to enter into the contract, thirty-six month contract with Hunter Communications. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So the second part we have is ACTEC solutions, the cost to migrate IP addresses and so on, twenty-four hundred, twenty-five dollars. I move to approve that.
I'll second it.
Motion had been made and seconded to approve the contract or not, I guess it's contract agreement.
Agreed.
ACTEC solutions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have minutes until July third.
Couldn't Melanie go back over that again?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July third as presented.
Second.
Motion had been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I was here.
Yeah, you were here. You were here. I read them. Melanie, we're, we're not going to put you through the pain of giving us an update on special transportation. And that's okay because we'll talk to you individually about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Melanie, I think, Commissioner, if you don't mind, to the degree that your throat can handle it, I think you wanted to say something, so we had a.
So, yeah, right woman. Sorry. Out of procedure this morning. So there's been some public hearsay and scuttlebutt about the commissioners and the county decreasing funds to our public transportation, which is the complete opposite of the truth. And I'd like that to be on the record, that we are only a pass-through agency. We manage the fund reimbursement. And last night, I met at the senior center with some concerned citizens. And we said we're frustrated with them because it's not fair to the county to be thrown under the bus for someone else's mistakes. So we're just trying to get the word out that we're working on it. We're grateful for the limited funds that we have for the next year, but transportation services won't be the same until next July, probably, until we give them more money. And there's no other way to get money from ODOT or STF, so.
Well, I, I'm going to interrupt you. It goes out for an RFP process.
Right, yeah.
People apply, there's a set amount of money, it's reimbursement only, and people apply and they receive these funds. End of story.
Right.
There's no other funds available. We can't pull money out.
Where?
And so when people respond to an RFP, they have to be in compliance with an RFP and a grant thing. So it's pretty simple for me and I appreciate all the extra and hard work you're doing. But anybody can understand that and that, that you tell them, it's an RFP process, it's pass-through dollars, it's a limited amount of money and you have to stay in compliance. That's what it is.
So right now presently, the Lake County Senior, Senior Center Association has exceeded their RFP amount that was allocated by the Special Transportation Committee. And we're hoping that we can readjust the allocation on June thirtieth on our special transportation. Maybe Teresa Conlon will be here, the region board manager to go over STIF funding that will be available in July of two thousand and nineteen. And she's going to go over the rules and applications. So we have the best applications that we can have to try to get those fun, additional funds.
Well, and it probably should be stated that the amount of funds that's coming in now is a huge amount compared to what used to come in.
Yeah.
And so the services and I'll work what through the process and say, we'll get on the ground. It's a lot different than what it was just a few years ago.
So I'm going to jump in here too with this and Melanie, you rest your throat for a minute. Charlie's here, Charlie Pike, our veteran service officer. He's one of the entities that stepped really up and had it so we received some substantial funding for transportation under the veterans program. Then we've got the, the special transportation funding, we've got the fifty-three ten. So to Commissioner Winters' point, we went from. So to Commissioner Winters' point, we went from a program some 10 years or 12 years ago that I think provided us with a maximum of $90,000 for a biennium, if I'm not mistaken, for the county, not for the county, but for the, those service providers in the county, to several hundred thousand dollars, and we're overspending that, we being those providers. And your point, Melanie, is really important, Commissioner Winters alluded to it, that there's an RFP process. We have two people, two entities, the Lake County Senior Center and the Intercourt Family Center in Paisley that applied. There isn't anybody that we know of that qualifies, but if they do, all they have to do is apply.
Right.
But you are, you are on the role of making sure that what the state says has to be sent in for, for payments that the state would make under that budget. That's your role, and you're, you're in a tough spot, and so the county is, but that's our only role.
Right.
We don't control how many rights they do, when they do them, what they pay, any of that stuff. And, and it is, to your point, it is really sad that people are out there thinking the commissioners are cutting people's budget.
Right.
We have nothing to do with it, other than we have really supported our special transportation provider, reaching out and figuring out between the state and working with Charlie and other entities to get more and more funding, so we can provide more and more service. But we have to stay within the amount we're given, and you hit the nail on the head. We're through one of, one year of a two-year budget cycle, and it is way overspent. We didn't spend it, we didn't make the decisions on how we spent, none of that.
We're not allowed to decide who they lay off, how they provide service, but last night I did state clearly the commissioners want equal service in North and South Lake, and they need to figure out a way to budget that, because you guys want it to be fair and equitable.
And Melanie, we really appreciate you mentioning that yesterday, because we've had those discussions, I know individually with you, that it's very clear, there is no north-south, we're sick and tired, quite honestly, of the north-south divide, and we want as much service in the north end of the county as we have in the south end of the county. We want everybody treated the same, but we don't control it. They need to collectively get together and start figuring some of this stuff out. And they ought to start with, the first thing they ought to start with, we can't spend more money than we get.
Right.
And what we get has to be a legitimate charge that we can get reimbursed for.
And we've been working on this since April, I think, just trying to like, coach them onto like, making smart ride choices and making good trips and not just running someone to their hair appointment, trying to get a couple peoples scheduled together, so it, it's expensive. Just, it's not just gas there, they have to pay insurance and...
Drivers?
Drivers and...
Everything.
Yeah. It's a big, it's more than just a little bit of gas, and so...
Well, and what you're just mentioning there, and I didn't want to give them too much discussion now in respect for how you're feeling today, but these dollars have to be used in compliance with the way that they're designed, and it's not for individual pickup, a taxi service. And on a positive thing, something you're working on is trying to get shelters, or that there can be a place where people go to, they're picked up. And I think that's one thing, as the senior center and others, they start getting, or it's going to be scheduled, this is it. There's a lot of individual misconception out there, and a lot of catering to some individuals and different residents that they think, they can just call and it's going to happen, and then people try to accommodate that. So they have to regroup and say, this is what the service can provide, this is what's in the guidelines, and I think it will help clean that up. And that, that's on a positive note, and I know you're working on that, Melanie.
Yeah.
And we're going to get there, it's great service to have, the dollars can stretch as far as they can, keeping it equal for all of Lake County is what we strive for. So, there, I guess I want to say thank you for what you're working on, thank you for going to that meeting, and it's just going to get better.
And equal doesn't always mean the very same dollars, but what it does for sure mean is that one end of the county's not going to get all of whatever's left, and the other end of the county's going to get zero.
Right.
That is not equal, that's not fair.
No.
And I'm going to just make a couple other comments, and hopefully some people out there that believe they know what's been going on are listening, and they'll give us a call, or stop by, or do something. But we have bought, I don't know how many new vehicles, from vans to buses, to the best that we can possibly get, the building of the bus barn, at the Annex and North Lake, all of these different things. And then with the Intercourt, a lot of their trips I know were done by individuals, and they get reimbursement for their vehicles. And they provide service, you know, specifically in the Summer Lake and Christmas Valley area, I don't know all their ride shares and so forth. But to your point, Commissioner, and I suppose this time I look at the glass as half-full, as the possible remedy for this, but it's like, we have got to have people do a little bit of planning, and we've got, get some designations. I have talked to people that have said, that provide those ride services, we can't keep going out without some kind of reimbursement for breaking tires and springs and so forth, out to these yonder places where there's no real road, and I'm going, why are you going out there? You know, we, we have expanded this program in people's minds to where, it's to your point, it's a taxi service, and it's not.
Yeah.
But we ought to be thankful for what we do have, which is more than we've ever had, and we're trying to take care of our citizens.
Well, I do believe, I do believe last night in that meeting that when they left, they had a good understanding of what we talked about, and I think we can make it better.
Good, thank you, Charlie. Melanie did brief us this morning, but thank you for all of your involvement in it.
Charlie's been great.
Yeah, well, both from the veteran side and funding, but it's also as a board member of the senior center, understanding the needs throughout the whole county. You clearly understand that.
You know something I believe would work very well, Melanie, and it would work with Teresa, and that's basically a white paper that has like, however many bullet points, special transportation, this is what it can be used for. It's just sort of a white paper, and it's not a whole bunch of on it, it's pretty much just the way it is.
I believe you already have something like that.
Well, and Commissioner, to your point, I, I think for those who really don't know that, I think most of them do, and I'm not suggesting they don't, I'm not suggesting that's not a good idea, but from Melanie, you correct me, or Charlie, you correct me if I'm wrong, it's the unlimitedness of doing things that are legal. It's like, we can't, we're not going to just schedule one day a week, or once every two weeks to go to Klamath or this or that. Whenever someone wants to go, we're going to go, and it's legal to go.
Yeah.
And it's like, wait a minute, that costs a lot of money each time, and we saw it this year. If we said we had a $400,000, and I'm not saying we do, but if we had a $400,000 biennium budget, that's $200,000, we've spent $300,000 of it. That's, that's the problem, and I don't know what kind of white paper you write for that.
Well, I think we're talking two different things. We have somebody that does an RFP, that it's not a white paper, it's what you have to go by. For the public, because a lot of public is scrutinized because of the drama world, that the white paper could eliminate a lot of the general public. So they understand, as far as people that are agencies that, by far, an RFP, it's written out, they sign the contract.
Yeah.
And how they interpret it, maybe their way of interpreting it, that, that's not what I'm talking about for a white paper. If you have the pickup places, whatever, the white paper, this is what special transportation stands for. It's not a taxi service, basically, that's sort of where I am. It is just a thought, it's not something to do, but I have, I have reached Joe's, I try to explain special transportation to him, and they still say it's the county.
I know.
Even in, as you're talking here, you say, "we," no, we didn't. The state gives dollars down, it's pass-through, that is, we are the governing body, those monies come through. So it's easy for the public to say, "Commissioner's done this," or "Commissioner's done that." It's spelled out, this is special transportation dollars, comes down from ODOT, federal, state, has compliance. It's not your general fund taxpayer dollars, it's not this other, it's a total pass-through, a total pass-through. They probably wouldn't want this to be in full control, because it might be a little bit different.
Yeah.
Or you want it to be...
Yeah, yeah, they sign, they do the RFP, they sign the contract, they're the ones. So anyways, any more on that? Alright, we got one more thing, and I got a lot of things to get, get to this morning. So, Mr. Charlie Pike, you have an department update, suicide prevention awareness, open house.
Yeah, it's short and sweet. Hey, first of all, I got two things. I did go to the national conference, and I am now nationally accredited, so therefore what it means is, there's a lot of confusion. People, what's the difference between, you know, when you go to the state and going to nationals? Technically, not a whole lot, other than it's like me going to Chenequeta versus going to the University of Oregon, the difference of training. You get a little bit of a higher train, which is outstanding training, stuff that normally you don't really teach through the state, where we can actually use in the field processes. So, it's very good to go to a conference like maybe once every other year, they recommend you go every year to a national, but because of funding, I think every other year will be good enough for us. Unless there's something very big that's changed, but we'll go year by year when it comes to that. On second, suicide prevention, as you know, Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs is doing, September 22nd is actually the Veterans Suicide Awareness and Prevention. Well, if you really read what's going on, the first sentence basically tells you a lot. It says veterans are at risk for suicide for all reasons, a non-veteran might be. One in five victims of suicide is a veteran, just in the state of Oregon.
Yeah, that's a pretty...
That, I mean, you just look at one in five, but four of them are civilians. So, what we're going to do with the Veterans Suicide Prevention, we're going to make this a suicide prevention awareness open house, open to everyone. We're not going to isolate, you know, the veterans and the non-veterans, we're going to make this a big event, and it will be done August 8th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Lake District Wellness Center. There'll be a barbecue for lunch, cake giveaways, and a door prize, and I just found out they're going to have a balanced house. We did not get $4,200 for an Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs for the event, we got $4,700. So, that will really help us a lot, because it's expensive to do events, especially in rural communities. We have talked to several places, to include using Facebook, break through announcements, The Chamber, where we've talked with, the radio's already got the announcements on suicide awareness open house, and we haven't gotten with the examiner since he's here. I gave you a copy of this, so hopefully this will get picked to the examiner, and just let me know what you need from me, and then I'd like to put this out. But we do want to push this out, we'd love to see over 200 people show up. If I had 50, that's perfect, because that's people that knows about what's going on and can push their hand out. But I'm hoping by doing all the advertisement, that the event will be well, well-known, and people come out and have a good barbecue.
One, one thing you have here, Charlie, that I really, I don't know, maybe you do a little extra, but it's your partners. Try to make sure you can get your partners, community partners there.
Yeah, I have that, here too, I haven't covered that part.
Well, I see, I read it in here, but you know, the faith group, all the churches and everything, try to get them to come.
Right, we've already contacted them, and it's an option for a lot of them, that's all we can do is contact them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and from your sheriff, to your town, police, to hospital, everything. Those partners, that everybody has a little play in some place.
Absolutely, and that was brought up, and one of the, I could budget, you know, it was, I brought that up, additional funding, count all the resources out, the community committee. And that's what I was just going to get to, is for resources, we do have, we've talked to the churches already, we've talked to the sheriff's department, the city police, ask them if they can just show their face. A lot of people fear off a little bit when it comes to that, especially in the suicide field, and that's because they don't want to be noticed. But they do want the resources, because there's tons of things that will cause suicide, revenues, they can't pay their property taxes, they can't pay their rent. The idea of doing this is to identify them and get them to those resources to help them out, because we don't need another suicide here in Lake County. We've had several, we don't need it, especially the ones that are the attempt suicides. That means that they've already got it in their head that they want to do it, they're tired of it, they don't have any family, they have nobody, no support groups. So we want to identify those and help them out. Resources, I've talked to Trace, the director of the Wellness Center, and we are going to do it as Lake County Veterans Services, or just Lake County and Lake District Wellness Center as doing this event. The resource that will be coming, we're going to do two main ones, one civilian, one veteran. NAMI, National Alliance on Mental Illness, dedicated to providing education, support, and advocacy for people with mental illness and their families. They will be there. And then for the veterans, we have Suicide Prevention and Reach Vet Coordinator, Southern Oregon Rehabilitation Center Clinics, and they're going to try to bring a vet center mobile unit out, and what that is, is where they're actually doing telehealth. And telehealth has really gotten big, using the, your computers or laptops, to do one-on-one with answers. And we want to push that along, because a lot of times when it comes to suicide, it's between them and the person, and nobody else to be around that knows. Even though they have to go through a process, and people will know that they have a problem, to get the, the equipment needed to do the telehealth, they have to go through the process, and we'll guide them through the process. There'll be a lot of advertisement out, we'll have crisis numbers on most of our advertisement that we have handed out. And like I said, I think it's going to be a great event, the lunches are free, you'll have Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association table out there, I'll have a table out there. We're looking at local community partners, they're going to have some tables out there, that's to include DHS and some of the others that we have through the UCAN.
So, the time of year, I don't know if we can get them there, but all of our schools, North Lake, Paisley, Lakeview, if you can get any representative from our schools.
I believe Trace was going to work on that, but I can do that too.
But, but the, the schools are a huge part of that community part, you know, you just, you get to thinking about it. Each, each one of our agencies to individuals might touch a person that has some mental illness or some suicidal tendencies and everything, so any time that we can bring all the partners together...
Absolutely, I'm all in for that.
It's really important.
And I like seeing community come together.
Is it all going to be in the parking lot in the backyard?
It's a, I actually went there this morning, and this one thing I really appreciate happening is having our, our Lake County department heads get involved with this too, because it's a big deal. Like, you know, the, the back park area, I don't know if you guys seen it lately, they just moved it up yesterday, it looks great. I just donated hoses and sprinklers this morning, so they can start getting green for August 8th, which, long as hot weather's going to be a little tough, but maybe we can make it nice back there, and they trimmed it up, it looks really good, and they're going to be out there a couple more times before the event. But we will have it back there, we'd ask people, Lake County, these out there, because of the key, recreational waters, tables, people sit out to eat their lunch.
Thank you, the commissioners have been supportive for years for that back lot to be used for children, by area, different things, and nobody's ever really addressed it, so with your push and with this, I'm, I'm pretty happy to see that.
I think it's great, they've already purchased these little tiny round tables that fit six people, you know, so, and they're short where kids can be on there. I like to, I think once we start something like this, maybe the hospital and Wellness Center can actually keep it going and make it better and better. And I don't know, you know, the process of when they're going to start moving, I understand that they, they're looking at renting another building, split it up a little bit. But I think that park back there is just fantastic, to have, you know, the family members and their children to sit there until their appointment times. So by doing this, at least we're showing that we want something to improve and make it better for our community. And anything that Lake County Courthouse can do to support us would be very much appreciated. I talked to Junior, he said he would do a barbecue as long as it was okay with his department head, so I'll get a date on that. And community corrections, them coming out and cleaning up, fantastic job, and I think we should have enough funding to do this whole event, and get more additional items to send up north and start hanging out north. And that way, they're not left out, I don't want them to be left out. They're going to get a job through the Wellness Center, and they said they might be able to do normal with any care too. And are there any more questions?
No, just, really, thanks for all you're doing, and so, I think that matters.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I would like to catch up with you later today, just a minute.
Sure. Anybody, Charlie? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Are you going to Paisley, by chance, where you can hand this to somebody to pass them out?
Am I going to Paisley? I didn't even have a good time.
I appreciate it, I just got a few that can go, you know, the post office or wherever, somebody can put them out, I think that'd be great to do that one, appreciate it, thanks.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Charlie, do you want me to send some out to the post offices?
Sure.
Posted on our website.
Actually, you can do that through the email, just attach this.
Yeah.
Do you want me to just send this to you, so you can send it to the news?
I have, yeah, I think I have, just, yes.
Okay, all right.
I'll do it on the website, and I'll send it out to some post offices to post and-
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.
You too. Good day, Charlie.
Hey, thanks.
You got it, Charlie.
Thanks.
All right, with that, we've, we went through a agenda, we have no session stuff for today. I think you covered your liaison update, you're in the other part, did you have anything else?
I have, I will today.
Doesn't fail.
Lots of stuff going on.
Yeah, I do too, but I'm going to go ahead and adjourn at 17 minutes after 10.